Good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. I'm going to call this the Board of the County Commissioners Meeting to Order. It is Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Johnson, would you lead today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on foundation under God, indivisible, and never be in justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, if you would silence it, if you need to take a coffee, could step out in the hallway, be appreciated. And also, we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. Public comments can still be submitted by person, or they can call in. And these are items that are not on the agenda and for information only. The two phone numbers are six oh five eight eight two six two four eight, or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, and we will address those during the open part of the meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners on the agenda?
No.
No.
Item number four, action to approve the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two agenda. Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Item number six, action on a request from Julie Nealan, Watertown Home Builders Association, to serve alcohol to vendors at the private social event at the Extension Center Complex following the close of the home show event. So yes, if you would step up, we'll turn on a mic and just state your name and what your request is, please.
Morning, Julie.
Good morning. Yes, good morning. My name is Julie Nealan. I'm with the Watertown Area Home Builders Association. And yeah, just asking to serve just some beer and things like that to the vendor, just to the home show vendors at the vendor social.
And this is something that has particularly happened. There's been no issues, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen.
Second.
What's the date for that?
That'd be March fifth.
March fifth?
Yep.
And who was the second? Yeah, I don't know, Gable or Johnson?
I made a motion and it was seconded.
Ah, whoever.
Whichever one.
Um, yeah, Johnson.
Yeah, we've never had any issues with this.
No, and this is when.
It's been a good, well-maintained event.
Yep, just to close, just the vendors themselves. And it's an appreciation event, so.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item numbers.
Have a good show.
Thank you. Yes, should be good. Monthly reports, start with the facilities manager, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning. I guess we'll start off right away with the government building. Not a lot happening, just kind of waiting to get some stuff done for this bid for the roof project. Make note, and so we had the one thing that I have been finding out and checking out, that what I did propose and stuff for budgeted for last year, it's going to be a little bit higher than what I had budgeted, because there's been a big inflation in the last year. I did add an extra twenty percent from last year, what was estimated, and it's not going to be enough. So I think I'm going to pull a couple of things away from what I was budgeting for this year to help pool it in to offset that. Detention Center, right now, they are looking over there, the tile and the floors and so we had are starting to separate on the flooring and so we had, and their concern is, is they had of breaking off tiles for the inmates to make possibly weapons and so that. So they're looking at getting some bids and quotes for, for tearing them out and probably putting some flooring of some sort epoxy or something like that down. I do know that they came in this past week on that to get some quotes and get some things on it. I do know they budgeted for it, but we'll see what comes back.
Because I know in the, in the main floor of the jail, they've already done that.
They already did that grinding, but one thing that was noted, when one of the guys, vendor, one of the guys came in noticing all, it was starting to wear through, and it was getting porous, that things could get going through the concrete there already.
So separate from it. So were the tiles another issue?
Tile, yeah, tile's another issue. That's in the cells area, and then, and also in from where it comes in through the garage.
Okay.
Plus downstairs in the basement.
Right. When you're mentioning the flooring, I did have, and I, I was really kind of surprised, people actually noticed the new flooring out of the extension building, and it looks really nice.
Yes, it does. I really like it. It's holding up nice and.
And they say it's really good, easy to clean up.
Yep. Yep, that's one thing it is. It's very easy to clean up and so we had, and the tile, the tile takes labor intense because you got to wax it periodically, you know, every year, and it just, so it actually is probably a long-term.
It could absolutely be used as a, as a weapon. I hadn't thought about that, you know, if they're breaking off pieces of the tile.
Right.
That's not good.
No. You know, and it's quite old already, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
You shouldn't have been mentioned in open session.
I mean, hey, Brenda, if you think that they haven't thought about that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not laughing, but it's like.
But it's, it's serious. It is serious.
Those are the things that we don't think about.
Right.
A lot of time to sit and think about ways to hurt each other.
Right. Um. Going on ag building, the farm show is complete. I felt that the crowd was, was kind of lower in the, earlier in the day, but as each day went on, it kind of steady, pretty busy on, on Saturday. Of course, when you have a lot, when you open it up, that, you know, kids can be able to come and families and so that, that makes a big difference.
Crack the barrel in the morning draws a few starting to come, so.
Right. Um, this coming week end, and so we had the Pro Pheasants and the Rabbit Show, and then, of course, there's many functions for every weekend, all the way up into April and so that. So it's, it's a pretty busy schedule always at this time of the year at the Ag Building.
Is the gun show out there?
Gun show is out there. I don't remember, sometime in March. Um, the park, the online system has started. Right now, I have seen three reservations done, done online so far. And so we had for it, of course, you know, they can only book out to a ninety-five day and stuff, so. And that's probably, a lot of it makes it confusing for some people, especially if they're used to the state system.
Yeah.
Starting at ninety day and going two weeks from that point. But I, I think people, as the time goes, they're going to get a little bit more aware of it. I mean, the city park is only, is only ninety days, period, so. Um, my notes here. The Highway Shop has been out, turned around, it's been taking trees out, some of the trees that are getting kind of rough shape and so that. And so they've been kind of cleaning things up out there, some of them that's hanging over. We'll have to get somebody to come in probably next spring and do some of the, what you call the widow makers up, that's hanging up above on some of these trees and so that, so.
Follow people's campers under camp.
Um, one thing I have been addressed by the Girl Scout, they have made a possible proposal for the Girl Scout Building to revert it to the county. I'll probably need to get a commissioner or so to go and, and talk with a gentleman on what they're proposing and so that, so. And my thought would be is to, would be turn the Girl Scout Building into like a cabin so that for rent. There is a big fire pit in there. I would imagine that probably wouldn't pass code, because that, I mean, I don't know if anybody's been in there, but it's, I would say it's at least five to six footed diameter in that building.
I'm guessing it's not going to be code.
So we'll have to look at if.
They have to just fill it in.
Yep.
Not used to heat the building either.
Probably could be.
So that is one thing that to look at for with the possibility of the park.
There's probably no smoke alarms in there either.
No.
And if you do renovate things, and then you have to follow whatever.
I have to follow code and guidelines, yes. Yes, there's electricity. There's a stove, there's water, there's a bathroom in there. Oh, yeah, it's, it would be a prime, it would be a prime cabin.
Yeah, it's close by the lake.
Yep, and it's right close by the lake. A great view.
Oceanfront property.
Um, going on with the weed, of course, the weed conference starts this week and so that. And tomorrow is training for the, for the weed supervisors, and of course, Cindy is on the agenda to try and give on stuff for budgeting and so that. Um, I was, I'm also was on the agenda to assist Paul on doing some spray drift damages and on spray truck rigs and, and spray types, so that I will probably have to not be able to attend that, so, at this present time. And then, next week is the weed and towns and township annual meeting will be at six thirty. You do, do have a postcard that I, that I got you there and so that.
Number eight on our agenda.
We're not probably going to do a West Nile, because that's probably in the, in the, in the light burner right now. And so I do know that probably in another month or so, they'll be doing the calibration of the machine, so.
How, Madam Chair, if I ask a question, how rampant is that still? Are we still seeing a lot of cases every year?
You know, two years ago, it was really quiet, really low. I mean, COVID was what hit everything, you know. If, if it wasn't COVID related, and they linked it to West Nile, and it was West Nile, it was low. It did ramp up a little more again last year. There was more cases again this past year, and so we had. The Department of Health was, had enough budget money to turn around and start doing some more testing for us communities that would send in, and so that this past year, and we did have, because of the drier conditions at the one point with a little bit of moisture, the West Nile cases did increase. I mean, we didn't, or, or, and, and the, oh, they call the culix tarsalis of the ones that carry to West Nile was higher level, but now the eighty vexons that are more or less the nuisance ones were really low. And everybody knew when they were out there last year, there was really nothing that, you know, hardly even bit you.
Yeah.
And a lot of that depends on the weather.
It is very weather.
The weather is, yeah.
It all depends on that.
Yeah. Well, anybody have any other questions?
For this, the towns and township meeting, it probably, and I don't know if this has already been talked about, having the representative, Lyseth, what's his first name? I can't, Dustin Lyseth, come and give the updates for that.
I would imagine it's, I'm not setting the stage for the towns, but I do know that, that she has sent out invitations to all the, all the townships. She's at state, she said she would send out all invitations to everybody. I do know that emergency manager, there will be somebody there for that. And then, of course, there'll be, their insurance will be there. And then, I would assume, because we do have local boards that are on the state board here.
Yeah.
There will be somebody representing and stuff going on, on some of the stuff, so.
Just to let them know going forward what the process is, just to make them aware of that.
Yep.
All right. Anyone else have any other questions? We might as well maybe just take care of your items.
We can do that.
Okay, let's just keep moving with it. Item number eight is just a note, annual local weed board towns and township soup supper and meeting, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, six thirty, at the Extension Center Complex. Item number nine, action to approve the two thousand and twenty-three memorial park campground rates. You have those in your package. You have the current and then the proposed.
Right. I make a motion to approve these, I guess.
We have a motion by Gable, second by Waterman.
One, one thing, one thing I will comment, so we had, down on the, on the double shelter, I did contact the city of Watertown. They'll find out what they do. They rent it for six hours, two six-hour periods in the day, so that. And, and so I did find out, they rent their shelter for twenty-five dollars for a six-hour period, so that. But being, I mean, we could subject to change these if we need to, as we have probably in the future, but.
So you're going to raise it to forty?
Yep, for the double shelter. So what it is, is there's two shelters considered the double shelter, and there's cemented shelter.
So that's for the day?
That's for the day.
For the whole day, not just six hours?
That's just not, no.
So those are what you call like your picnic?
Yep, it's a picnic shelter.
Picnic shelter, okay.
So question on a couple of things, Madam Chair. So the full hookup part, or under seasonal rates, where it says full hookup, and it doesn't have any prices next to that, is that?
There, yeah, I didn't get that put in there until that last year. It basically correlates, what it correlates is, is you take the full hookup and so that, not the pull-through, but the full hookup, you take that times twenty-eight days, and then they get five-day discount is what they get for a seasonal, on a twenty-eight day period.
Do we need to put that on this?
So this, that's one whole paragraph there from seasonal rates?
Yes, right, yep.
It's all one?
That's all one.
So it's minimum twelve weeks?
Yeah, minimum twelve weeks stay.
Yes, that's all.
It includes the full hookup.
Yep.
Seven eighty would be.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
So that's. But seven eight, oh, I should have turned around and had it, the minimum stay, yeah, but it should have been a monthly rate.
That's sorry, yeah.
So that's seven eighty.
Yep, seven eighty per month.
Per month.
Yeah, per, yeah, per four-week period.
So we need to.
Make note of that, yes. Thanks for catching that.
Four weeks, not months.
Okay, so. Yep, four weeks, yep. But with a twelve-week minimum in order to qualify for a season.
So seven eighty is a per-month stay?
Four weeks. Four weeks stay for twelve weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Because sometimes with their more weeks in a month of the days, so.
Can I, then we should probably, we need to, do I need to amend my motion to?
No, because nobody has seen this, so it's still a draft.
Probably should have had the, probably should have turned around and started out with the.
Like that.
With a policy first.
Is that what you mean?
Yep, four weeks.
Yep, four weeks, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other additions or?
Just so we know that the sort of, so the twelve-week stay includes the thirty-year hookup.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on this already. Are we ready to adopt this? Do you need, because Steve would like to get this in the brochures, is that correct?
Yeah, because it almost, it needs to be before, well, this has to be get in the brochures before the season starts, so. Because of what will follow up with the, with our campground reservation policy.
Steve, is sales tax added on top?
No, this, this is all sales tax included.
Okay.
Yes.
Just calculate it in reverse, okay, yep.
City Watertown charges on top.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Maybe we should have one, maybe we should have a final copy. Are you all right with this?
I'm okay with that.
We don't change that.
Lee added it up on, on the screen.
The only thing that really changes.
I just added it on my paper.
Okay.
And the only thing, yeah, is just that we have it the one, four weeks, just to clarify.
All right, so I'm ready.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Move on then to item number ten, action to approve memorial park campground reservation policy.
This here is the policy that kind of more or less between Becky and I and Lee kind of got things drafted on this thing. So that I do, Lee put it in a nice format and so we had for this.
Yeah, so I mean, I caught a typo that.
That could be.
Probably my fault, but I put a, fixed it on the screen there, so it's just that under the seasonal camping reservations.
Okay.
So with, on that fourth bullet, it says full payment, and I inserted the word for subsequent.
Okay, yep.
So it's just a typo.
All right.
Then maybe, I think on the building reservations, I think what we talked about was in-person and on or form reservations only. So for those, you can't make online reservations.
Correct.
I just added the word only.
Yep.
To that.
So should it be subsequently four-week period of state?
So full payment for subsequent, four-week periods.
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 So if you take out, you stick in a four and take away a.
It's trying to explain basically how they can do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Full payment a four week, is that what you're reading? A four-week periods.
So, so full payment for subsequent four-week periods. So take out the, take out the.
Okay.
That's.
It asks that they have periods.
Yeah, but when you take out the, when you take out the indefinite article, do you remember that from grammar?
Payment for something, oh, all right, all right. Okay, so we added four and took out a.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right.
Appreciate Steve.
Periods, all right.
I make a motion to approve this one.
I will second the motion.
All right, have a motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen. And you had it only on behind here, okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or that anyone has about this?
The one thing I can state, one thing trying to do is make it, this thing is trying to make it for other customers to be able to be able to book, plus they have the option to be able to book your head, of course, with the stipulation of, you know, renting a building is that. Because there could be so many loopholes that could happen and develop, so.
All right. We ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. We'll move on then. We have a few more items for us. Item number eleven, action to approve a project at the Extension Center Complex for heating, air conditioning, and electrical.
Um, this here is, for one, the heaters are getting outdated. They're a little bit noisy and so that. And, and what this is going to do is they're going to put the furnaces up above the balcony, like what's in the echo chamber. The only thing is, is I do notice when you're in that echo chamber, you can still hear the furnaces. So we might have to put a kind of a, a barrier wall against there, just to kind of block some sound and so that. And, and then, of course, adding the air conditioner will probably encourage and so that for some more summer rent of some functions and so that, so.
Now that, uh, air conditioning, will that be, heats the next building, or cool the next?
No, it will not. It'll be the doors, no, it'll be the doors that have to be closed for, for that to be functionable.
And I actually had, had individuals mention that fact to me that for family reunion, sometimes it gets rather warm in there, and so.
It really does, especially when you're in that middle, if you are in that middle section, it's.
What is the middle section?
It'd be Expo one.
Okay.
Yep, Expo one.
In between Echo and then.
Echo chamber stayed nice and cool.
Yeah, and that has air conditioning in that, and that stays fairly cool.
It stays pretty good.
So.
So, so just to clarify, Madam Chair, so the, the upper limit is a hundred thousand before you have to go to bed, so we're, we're well within that.
Hartwig is pretty well been our, our heating provider out there pretty well, and most of the furnaces out there, so.
They put in the last ones.
Yeah.
Was it about four years ago?
It's probably about four years ago, I'd say, and stuff. Yeah, there have been more, mostly are major heating and cooling.
Looking at this proposal from Hartwig, it says no wiring in this bid, so that's separate from.
That's separate, that's with the.
So Expo one, would we use selections for Expo one and two?
Yes.
So one of them will have air conditioning.
One will have and one will not.
Unless you don't run it at that time. You won't have to shut that door though, will you? Yes. Between the two.
Well.
Because that's their, that's.
Yeah, I know.
Where the voters walk through, is that bringing down that overhead door is gonna clog things up.
Well.
You don't have to run it during that time, would you?
We don't have to, but we could run it. It's just going to probably run a little, it's going to turn around and utilize a little more electricity or power to keep it cool.
In June? Sometimes.
Sometimes it can be.
It just, yeah.
Right.
There's no guarantee. It could be freezing cold, or it could be really warm. Okay.
But yeah.
Okay.
Trying to split this up because.
But bringing that little door down between those two.
And one of the thing, yeah, and one of the thing is, is you don't have to have that door probably totally all the way, you know, you could probably halfway.
As long as you don't clip somebody's head, yeah. And tie it up so don't.
No, we don't have to be, don't have to be that low.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we want to do these, because then we have the electrical as a separate, or a separate proposal, so.
I make a motion to accept, you know, the heating and air conditioning proposal.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. These are budgeted.
These are budgeted items.
Any other.
This is probably the closest.
Is, okay, you do have it on the screen, forty-six thousand.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about this project? We're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Now, the electrical portion of that, we have a proposal as well. Steve, do you want to give any?
Um, there's just basically, and so we had, um, this is proposed, of course, I mean, I had them, both of these, and so we had, I had it, did it, or had them estimate last year, there was a slight increase, and so that, a lot less than some of the things that, that have increased it. So I do have enough on the budget for both of these items. Basically, the work will be just electrical wiring for these components, and, and pretty well, everything is pretty well self-explanatory.
I'll make a motion to approve that, so we can hook up our new.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson, and that amount is eight thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. We use electric. Any more comments, questions? We're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Now, item number twelve, action to approve a proposal for architectural services for courthouse re-roofing project. Do you want to explain the importance of?
Okay, one of the things is, is because this is a big project, and so we had up here, and it's a, it's a high-dollar project to get an engineer to do this, to get it done properly, one thing that they will do is they'll do the step process all the way from the beginning of the, of getting the bids and going through everything. It, it eliminate, it, it basically eliminates me from basically having to do all the work for this and so that, so.
Well, they're, they're also, if I might add, Steve, these, these folks are qualified to write the specs.
Right, yes. That's probably the biggest thing, is going through the old specs, what was done before. And so that, these guys can actually do the total specs and, and have everything done properly. I did contact a couple, a couple of people and so that, and they referred these people. They do mostly a lot of re-roof projects and so that, so this was recommendations from other engineers, so.
That is a very large project, so.
It is a very large project.
I make a motion to approve this or accept this.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. And we learned from the wind project, it's good to have individuals that work out with this on a daily basis, watching those projects.
And if I could add, just so people know, the courthouse roof is not, it's not a simple thing. It seems, when you think about a roof, sometimes it seems simple, but with the, with our rotunda and the, the glass roof protecting that rotunda, it's not, it's not a.
And then, then we also have, there's also sun roost or whatever on top of, over top of the court courtroom area, so that, that even adds complication. Different steps up there, there's different levels. It's not just a flat roof up there, so.
Is that the hundred and fifty thousand dollars you have budgeted?
Yes, it is. Yes.
But that's not going to cover.
It, we're trying to probably be slightly low.
So we'll see, that's, these guys chap.
These guys chap. They'll turn around and try to work as much as you can, I can, with the budget. There might be a couple of things that, that can probably not have to be done, so that, what would be a normal toll, tear off a roof. There's probably some things that they can look at to turn around and not have to totally redo.
For cost.
And so that, for cost and stuff, trying to eliminate cost.
Anything is, a project like this, if they're up there, it's time to do it.
It's time to do it, and, and, and we started having some leakies last year. We'll see what happens this coming spring. But I know when it was up there, I mean, this roof is well overdue, usually a fifteen-year limit on a roof. This has been, it's been over twenty, twenty years now, so.
Oh, I, I, I feel that once we get into this, we should look at it with the eyes of completing the project. Oh, I I I feel that once we get into this, we should look at it with the eyes of completing the project.
Half percent.
Right.
All right, ready to vote? Commissioner Gable?
Right.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, that motion carries, I wasn't sure if you were coming with a question.
No, no.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
I guess I would just like to add, I don't know if you guys are all aware, if you kinda heard Cindy say um, um, extend our sympathy to Steve with the passing of his father, so sorry to hear that.
Yeah, I'm very sorry.
Give me with us and I thought some prayers.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thanks. Let's move on then to uh, Highway Superintendent.
Morning, Rick.
Good morning.
Morning, Rick.
Well, the guys are all crack sealing on Sioux Conifer Road. When they get done there, they're gonna move down the County Road twenty dash five, which is south and east of uh, Highway eighty one. We've got all the miles down there, we're gonna chip seal, so they will not get done crack sealing this year. And then we have all the new pavement, uh, everything that was uh, ground completely out and had the base one put in it, there's only one crack. The rest of it where we milled and overlaid, it's starting to crack, and hopefully we can get on some of that, that before the cracks are too bad.
Yeah.
But uh, that's something that we'll just move from one spot to another whenever we can. And we've been dodging the weather to crack seal. And as long as I'm talking about it, when you come across these guys that are out on the road, slow down. You know, we have flaggers on each end, but uh, some people just feel that they're just something to drive around. You know, these guys are just working for a living and they wanna go home at the end of the day, so please be careful when you go by them. Like Steve said, we've been uh, cutting trees out at Memorial Park, trying to help out there, clean up the brush piles and there's still more trees that need to be removed that were dead. We still have some piles out there that'll be cleaned up, and those will be on the days that we can't crack seal. We had some trees in our shop area that were dead, we're taking those down also. We removed the snow piles at the the Ag Building for the Farm Show, that went pretty good.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, sure, for no more snow, we have, there was a lot of snow out there.
But it 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 was really nice, I mean, the parking was, I mean, dry, uh, sufficient, I mean, it was appreciated very much.
Yeah, it was, it, things turned out pretty well.
Yeah.
We had enough nice weather to bear up the pavement, so we didn't have to go out and spread a bunch of sand and
Yeah.
And the guys out at the Ag Building really appreciate not to have to spread all that sand, because that all gets tracked in the building for them to clean up.
Good thing is the floor makes it easier to clean now, right?
Yes, it did. The guys, all of us went through M Shaw training at the last week in January at the Ag Building. Uh, every year we have to go through that for our mine safety and general safety. There's other counties that come, it's a two day deal. All the, all the surrounding counties come to it, so it works out good for us. I also was informed from Butler Caterpillar that uh, they changed the warranty on our three new motor graders from seven years to ten, or from seven years to nine years. So we got two more years and that didn't cost us a dime to have that done, so they let me know about that. So that'll help when we go to replace those machines that hopefully we don't have to do all three of them at one time.
Yeah.
So we can do it over a course of three years, so that that'll help, that was big. That's all, and I guess that's about all I have for my monthly report. Pretty quiet, which is excellent.
Be careful, don't wish, don't say that.
Well, we're on the short side now, so.
Yeah, could be a rough March.
Yeah, I think we're talking temps in the thirties this next week, is that what I'm hearing? So maybe we'll get some melting.
I seen something next Tuesday that looks white, but maybe.
Oh, geez.
Uh, all right. Anybody have any other questions for Rick about his report, otherwise we'll move on to item number thirteen then, action to award bids for the annual highway supplies and open those up last week. When I see there was quite an increase in most things.
Yeah, most everything went up. Nothing stayed the same. To start off, I have a couple of corrections.
All right, I gotta get to my sheets.
Okay, the first one is on the box culvert, I read off the uh, doubles instead of the single for for Tara. Instead of nine eighty six, it should have been five eighty seven for the eight by eight. Box, okay, so. Or eight by, okay, so say the pricing again. The the new price is five hundred eighty seven for the box, the eight by eight box culvert.
For Tara.
Yep, for Tara.
That was the only bid we had.
Five, no, I'm, I missed one, so. Five eighty seven.
Oh, we're going right direction there, we went down.
Yeah, that's, that's how I noticed it when I got back to my, from last year, I was like, oh geez. Is that correct, they put that correct for five eighty seven?
Instead of nine eighty six, yes, yep, and then the next one will also change.
Yep, and then uh, ten by ten for for Tara was eleven eighty seven, and then.
That was the double.
That was the double.
That's what we had, yeah.
Yep. So you're just. And that's going down to seven twenty six.
Okay.
That's better, yeah.
So that's, I would imagine, it's just not knowing which part of the sheet to read on. Yes, and when you open it up, yeah, I had the the numbers of the page from last year, well, they changed the numbers and I went to that page and, yep.
So who was the other bidder then?
Chemcast.
Okay, yeah, because we had them last year, I wonder.
Yep, and I covered up.
Concrete box culvert, Chemcast did have a bid.
They did have a bid, and the eight by eight was eight eighty five.
Fifty. For some reason, I saw.
It was eight by eight.
Yes. Yeah, they're higher than what Fortera was.
They were six eighteen.
Ten by ten as well, I'm sure.
What's that?
A ten by ten as well.
Yes.
Eight eighty five, fifty.
And, okay.
Okay, and then the ten by ten was one thousand seventy eight. And they didn't, they didn't bid on the bridge deck.
There was a fifty cents on that one, too.
Well, sir.
Yeah, one thousand seventy eight fifty for the ten by ten.
Okay. All right, and then, and they didn't bid on the bridge deck? No, okay.
Just a single cell, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, there were fifty cents on both of those.
And then on the gasoline for ball and oil, I announced three nineteen for our outshops for gas. We do not have gas in our outshops.
Oh.
And the price they quoted for for E ten was three twelve, three dollars and twelve cents.
Yes.
After this weekend, they may.
Oh, I had three nineteen.
Took a heck of a jump.
Three nineteen was the outshops, which we don't use, so three twelve.
Three forty nine.
Mm-hmm.
Recorded.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to a nephew that lives out in Oregon, they pay about four bucks now.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, to do this, Cindy, we wanna do these all.
Separately.
Separately, so that, because they're going to be different. So let's start with concrete pipe, correct?
Correct.
Hi.
All right, we'll go with Fortera's bid on the twenty four, the thirty six and the sixty inch pipe.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
What about the, okay, thirty six, what about the twenty four, are you gonna go someone else for that?
I didn't say twenty four, I thought I did.
Okay, then I missed it. Okay, all three.
I can get mixed up enough on my own.
So all three then with Fortera?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, all three with Fortera or just just twenty four? Twenty four, thirty six and six. Okay.
Yeah, I thought I only heard two, so then I was.
Yep, that's for all three.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, that motion carries. Press bridge deck, a pre-stress grid deck.
We'll go with Fortera, that was the only bid we had on that. So moved, on the forty and the fifty foot. So, so.
Motion by Gable.
I'll second.
Second by Johnson, any comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, that motion carries, concrete box culverts.
Okay, that's something that we just went through, we'll go with Fortera on the eight by eight and the ten by ten.
Oh, wow, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen, any comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries, um, we'll talk about these pipes, I guess the next one, that's on the uh, fourteen, um, diesel fuel then, we didn't get any bids for bridge lumber.
Okay, the diesel fuel, we'll go with Sioux Valley's bid for Schaefer's diesel fuel for number two was two fifty four. In the outshops for number two was two seventy four. For number one was two seventy nine. And in the outshops, it was two ninety nine. This is just the diesel, that was just diesel fuel, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Gable. Second, second by Johnson, comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, that motion carries, gas, gas.
I recommend we go with Sioux Valley's bid of two seventy nine for gas for the E ten. We don't have any E thirty at our shop and they were two sixty four, and we don't have any E eighty five and they were two thirty.
Move, approve.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable, comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, that motion carries, liquid asphalt per ton.
Okay, we'll go with Flint Hills for the MC three thousand, which was seven forty five seventeen per ton. Make that motion.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen, comments or questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries.
Okay, on the, Jebro had a bid for MC seventy, which was nine fifty seven forty five. Recommend to take their bid for the MC seventy.
So move. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries, all right, we have that taken care of, we're moving to P gravel.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we have Northern Conag that had a bid of six dollars and twenty five cents per ton, I recommend we go with that.
So move. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable, any comments, questions, hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries, gravel crushing.
Okay, I I recommend that we take both Brownlee Construction and Rogie Excavating for their gravel crushing. Because just for the fact that if one can't, the other one can, and we may not have all the pits that are available to both of the individuals to crush, Brownlee's for three quarter inch gravel was two thirty four. Rogie had two fifteen, crushed per ton. And then on five eights, Brownlee had two seventy four. And Rogie, he just had one bit, so it was two fifteen, and then on half inch, Brownlee had three twelve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen.
Second.
Second by Gable, comments, questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, that motion carries, asphalt patching material.
Okay, Dunick had cold mix for one sixty five, I recommend we take that.
Well, we'll do these all together.
Okay.
All hot, all the hot.
Okay.
Because it's one motion, it's the same, um, supply.
One motion, um. Okay.
And then the hot mix from Dunick's was seventy two fifty, and that was for three quarter inch, I recommend we take both of those.
So move.
Johnson, second by Gable, comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries, uh, riprap material.
Okay, we had three companies that bid on this, Spencer Corey's, theirs was sixteen fifty per ton. I recommend we go with their because we're gonna have to buy some riprap and that's cheaper than what we have been paying.
That was for all sizes.
Yep.
Inside delivered, no. Where are they at?
Spencer, South Dakota.
Down by Mitchell. And that is not delivered either.
No.
None of them do, I don't know.
We had Crease Construction uh, with thirty two dollars per ton, and that was delivered. But being he didn't, he went outside the spec of what we had.
The specs did not call for delivery.
Yep, and I talked to him at Legislative Audit, we so we can accept this bid.
All right, so um, we're just going to that addresses all three of your bids then, you're gonna go with the Spencer, okay.
So move.
All right, motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. That should take care of all that, right?
You know, we have a Beetle County bid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that's item number fourteen, action to purchase highway supplies from Beetle County bid award.
And this, this is for metal pipe, they had a bid from Tru North Steel, which next year we will have, I have to change the wordage in our bid document to comply, so we can have those guys bid, they didn't, they only had one bid this year and uh, it was through Beetle County. So, and that's, we'll go off there.
So is that their plan, the way they wanna market their pipe now through through one county?
No, 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 it was just the the wordage in my bid spec, that needs to be changed.
Okay.
Because it was, because like last year, you know, they canceled our.
Yeah.
And uh, this way they have a chance to raise their product if the price goes up on their materials that they bring in, so.
So they had that clause in there then?
Yes, they did.
And they're the only county that had that in.
I think so.
Uh, do you have the amounts of what their bid was on the pipe?
So that's for corrugated metal pipe, five by one corrugation and five by one corrugation arch, all three?
Correct. Okay, eighteen inch, sixteen gauge is twenty five fifty a foot. Twenty four inch, sixteen gauge is thirty two thirty per foot. Thirty inch is fifty one dollars per foot. Thirty six is.
Thirty is what?
Fifty one.
Fifty one.
Thirty six is sixty one twenty.
I'll make motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen.
Um, we'll take all three of these as one, because they're buying all from Beetle County bid, so yeah.
All right, so now we'll move on.
Actually, the the motion is going to be to purchase from the Beetle County bid, and we're just restating their their bid numbers.
That's what my motion is.
Okay.
We, except the Beetle County.
He has more to give us.
But there's two more ideas.
We have two more to.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, the five by one corrugation, sixty inch, fourteen gauge is one oh five sixty one.
Okay.
Seventy two inch by twelve gauge is one seventy three sixty three. Ninety six inch twelve gauge is two thirty two seventy. The one oh eight inch is two sixty one thirty four.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Everything, yeah.
One fifty seven to two thirty two.
It's kinda like Steve's roof, you don't know what you're gonna pay.
And and do they have a clause there if available, or do they have anything to, you know, our, I mean, we're not guaranteed.
No, that's, they may not have material either, so that's.
If we get it.
Yeah.
We gotta be able to, yeah, at least have this in place, so we can.
Yeah.
Move forward with it.
So now we can move on to the five by one corrugation arc.
Okay, the sixty Inch class sixty six by fifty one twelve gauge is one fifty nine fifty seven. The seventy two inch class, the eighty one by fifty nine inch twelve gauge is one ninety one oh nine. The one oh eight inch class, one twenty eight by eighty three inch twelve gauge is two eighty seven sixty two.
So now we're looking.
And there's also the bridge deck lumber.
Oh, they did.
Associated with that.
Okay.
And that is two sixty seven forty.
For which type?
For the three inch by twelve inch by twenty.
Okay, what was that number again?
Two sixty seven forty.
And that's the only one you have on the bridge lumber then?
Yes, they're the only ones that usually bridge, uh, bridge lumber.
Is that it? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Van Dusen. Second by Gable. Any comments or questions? And this is going off on the bid from, um.
True North Steel.
And Beetle County.
Beetle County accepted, um, in January, it looks like. January eleventh.
Alright. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Alright, um, looks good. Item number fifteen, discussion regarding possible closure of one block on County Road twenty three.
Okay, I'm gonna bring up Mitch Reed. He is the superintendent for, uh, the Florence School.
Okay. Sounds good. Mitch, if you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself, please, and. Explain what it is you would like to do.
Talking to that mic. Uh, Mitch Reed, Superintendent of Schools at Florence School District. Uh, thanks for taking the time to, to listen. Anyone?
Go ahead.
Um, I'll kinda lay some background here before we get going. Um, we're up about fifty five students in the last five years. Florence is growing with about five or six new families that are contributing to our enrollment in the last year and a half. Uh, with that comes growing pains, growing pains. You know, you're either growing or you're not, but, um. We had an opportunity, uh, from a landowner right next to us, um, donated the land. We started an endowment fund for some scholarships. So we own both sides of, uh, County Road twenty three. We weren't really sure what we were going to do with it, but just knowing that, uh, growing is going to play a role in, in that land. And it, it, the turnaround time was much quicker than we thought it was going to be. We are in drawing and planning, um, a, a bus barn. As well as two classrooms and a science CTE lab on that other side of that road. And that was kind of where we were. We were fine. We kinda, the logistics aren't there. I mean, crossing a road, a county road, um. In the middle of winter, ADA things we have to consider and all that, but knowing that we needed space, we, our hands were kinda tied. And then a, a few weeks ago, I had called Rick and just thought, you know, what, what are the possibilities? I do understand if that road ran all the way through the lake like it used to in the nineties, um, a no brainer, but, um, I just said, what's the possibility? And Rick said, well, um, it's not a terribly serviceable road unless it's in, in town, so maybe have the, the commission listen to it and. You know, I, I told the board, we had a board meeting last night and I said, you've hired me to do a job and, and two of them is, is to keep them safe and educate students and. This is the best plan to, to keep those students safe, make sure they're in the building. You know how middle school, high school students are, they'd run outside and. With no coat on and, in January and February and we would have really no control over that. So this is an opportunity to keep them under the same roof. Uh, make sure that they are, are safe and. Go from there. So I just like your, your consideration, your thoughts on it. Um, I do understand that. There are going to be some negative aspects of this, but from a school district standpoint, it, it makes a lot of sense to us as far as we're growing. I mean, you kinda look at the enrollment in the last five years, um, we kinda stage it out and what our enrollment's going to look like forward. And it's pretty safe to say that we will continue to grow as, um, our academics and our offerings at Florence continue to grow. So this also gives us the opportunity to, to continue to build on and, and be a safe and insecure complex. Whereas you go across the road, walking across the road, we're gonna keep adding on over there. It just gives us an opportunity to move forward to the school district. So I, I would just like your consideration and thoughts on that proposal.
How much land at the school?
Little under ten acres. Um, just, you see those trees in that picture, that tree belt to the south, that L shape, we got all the way to that. Um, and what you're going to see is that dead end road on Main Avenue up there. That long rectangle, that's about right here, right, right north of the north on the compass there. What we do plan on doing, I've talked to Mayor Pat Callan yesterday and just informed him that I was gonna come. I, I wanna be very transparent in this. I don't wanna brush anything under the rug. I want our community to know our thoughts and our aspirations. There is an opportunity to possibly finish that road from there into Klein Avenue and make it just kind of a square block, so. Will it be accessible to Main Avenue right away? No, but it is a plan of the school and the city to, to eventually make that a possibility for those people on the south side of town. Cause it, it is inconvenient. There's, there's no way around that. Um, they do have access on that south road, uh, to get to Highway twenty, all the way to the south. But we just hamper their, their ability to exit straight north on County Road twenty three.
Have you had any discussions with the property owners on the south side of the school there in terms of any concerns that they have?
Our process after talking with you, I'm working with our lawyer, we will notify them. Um, a- according to codified law, it's not required, but we certainly want to do that. Again, we wanna be transparent in this.
Right.
Very much so. So yeah, that is our, our plan next, depending on kind of where you guys are at with it all.
So the portion that you're wanting to vacate is that orange?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm saying?
Just that one block right by the school, right on the west side of the school currently. And the, the south end in the green there. The only thing that I'm going to do is talk to the mayor and have them plow the snow off at the winter time. We'll still maintain it when it needs to be chip sealed and all that stuff because the city doesn't have any way to do that. It's currently still, it's our road. The only thing, I'll just get into a service agreement, so they'll plow the snow off at the winter time.
That's a, that's a paved road.
Yeah, that's a paved road.
So this, it goes all the way down?
Five blocks there.
Yep, four, five blocks. That's, that's it, so.
So this is the portion you're gonna do the agreement with, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And I, I have not talked to the mayor about it and, uh, we wanted to present it to you guys before we did anything, so.
So Mitch, once again, just so I'm clear, are you, you're talking about the bus barn would be located over here?
It would actually be the classrooms and I should have been more clear on that. It is gonna give us the ability to attach that. So you see where that, uh, high school, that current high school on the, uh, north side of our property, that will just continue to run along. So we'll have two classrooms and a lab at the end.
So you would be building over that stretch of road?
Yeah. Uh, and you know, that wasn't the plan right away, um, but it is the, the best plan again to keep everyone under the same roof and, um, the bus barn will be unattached.
Where, where will the bus barn be at?
Farther to the west.
Okay.
Farther to the west, yep, and the doors will be facing north for snow purposes, but, um, and then eventually we'd like to develop that road, so our buses can go around that. Utilize the gas pumps that would be right next to our bus barn and then go into our bus barn to the north.
Well, it certainly wouldn't take any people. You wouldn't have to displace any people or disturb any homes.
No, it just, it would be the convenience of driving north and I, I understand that. I mean, our board talked in length about that yesterday about. How that plays a role, but I told them my responsibility and what you've hired me to do is keep your kids safe and educated and.
So I think anytime we look at closing a stretch of road, one thing that we have to consider is public safety's response to a neighborhood or to an area and, um. I can't see that this would really hamper emergency responders to, to getting to any of those residences except for. Maybe that one on the corner, which means that they would have to come down whatever street this is, I'm not sure, and then go west on Klein Avenue, but. That would be my concern, but.
Thorson Avenue runs over to the east and then, then takes a left turn and goes up to Highway two twelve.
No, it runs straight east, right up to State Highway twenty.
Yeah, comes out on.
Yeah, you can get on Highway twenty from Thorson Avenue. The rest of the streets in town do not go to State Highway twenty. The only one that does is, that goes east and west is Main Street.
Oh, there's gonna be some complaint, I'm sure, from some of the residents there for six weeks anyway, until they just realize that it's no big deal.
Well, and you know, talking about some of the, uh, traffic, um. I don't even wanna put a percentage on it, but a high level is school related traffic. And by looking at, cause what we would probably do is run that building east and west and then put a vestibule. To student parking, so that will actually be student parking in there and eventually continue on with complexes, whether it's a. A football field or something, you know, it gives us the opportunity to continue to grow. Um, so once that parking lot's there, they're going to see actually that it's. And then that road is developed around that, uh, connecting Main Avenue and Klein there. Once that's all done. I think it actually makes a lot of sense. Right away, it might be like, oh, that's a change, but I think it would be very nice for our students. Um. Yeah.
What is the process involved with vacating a stretch of road like this as far as?
The second handout that Rick gave.
Yeah, there's, there's information.
Starting that left hand column on the front page, there's, there are, there are hoops to jump through first.
Yes, there'll be more meetings. There'll have to be petitions and all that in there.
Basically, you just wanna find out if we have an appetite for moving forward.
That's, this, this is just information. That's, that's all right now.
So there's, what the school will do again with, I, I, I told the mayor, I'd like his grace before moving forward as well. Um, I'm gonna chat with him again today. Um, we'll get our lawyer working on, uh, the petitions and the notices to areas or, uh. Residents in the south. Uh, we're gonna start working on that as early as, uh, later this afternoon. Um, depending on again, where your, your thoughts were on it and I believe then we have to advertise for ten days before a decision is made.
To me, it looks like your plan is a, is a good one to move the, the school forward there. If you're anticipating future growth, which you are, and I, and I agree with you Mitch, I don't think that that's. You're not gonna see a de- decline in enrollment, I don't think. So just makes sense to expand off to the west there if you have the, the land, so.
I would just add, you know, uh, in my opinion as well, you know, why split it up? If you can make a, a building that they don't have to go outside and go across the street, it just makes more sense for those kids and safety also is a, is a big issue there, so. I don't have any issue with.
This is, this is truly a, a bold move for a smaller county.
I'm, I'm gonna hear it. I'm not, there's no doubt, but again, that, that's my interest is, is the student safety and their academics and this makes sense in that regard, so. I'll be willing to take the, the runt of the rest, I guess.
You know, we had a school in town here, uh, that did the same, same thing, Saint Martin's and that, you know, it's been an adjustment. Every time I go up there, I have to go, oh god. The street doesn't go all the way through, but you find a way to.
Makes it much, much safer.
Mm-hmm.
And I, all you for thinking this through and, and looking at all the angles and, and I think it's a good, a good plan. Keep them inside, keep them off that street, or try to keep them off the street.
Try the best we can.
Yeah. Yeah.
I appreciate you guys' time and your consideration and we'll get the rest planned and work through. Rick, he's been great to work with.
The only thing the county will have to do on the north side of the school, on the northwest corner of the intersection, we will add a stop sign. So when somebody's coming from the north and they get to Main Street, they will have to stop. Currently, they don't have to stop. The stop sign is on the east side. Of the intersection. That one will remain, but we will add one on the north side, so.
It'll be three way.
Yep, be a three way stop there.
I bet that's the only three way stop in Florence.
I would.
Well, we've got a lot of stoplights, we've got a few roundabouts.
I was gonna say, you might as well, why don't you make it a roundabout?
We'll do that. That'll be the next thing.
Don't put a roundabout.
It keeps it going, Troy.
Oh.
Alright, I guess, uh, consensus from what I'm hearing is we don't have any opposition to you moving forward and see, I guess, how that works with your, within your city and.
And thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. Take care, guys.
Alright, thanks Mitch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. Okay, uh, we'll move on then to, um, item number sixteen, action to approve abatement applications.
We have five today. The first one is a property owner who qualifies for, um, an assessment freeze program through the state of South Dakota. And that abatement will be one thousand eight hundred and forty seven dollars and eight cents. The next four are two pieces of property, uh, purchased by the Watertown School District. In twenty twenty one. And the abatement on record number one one two eight six will be three hundred and seventy dollars and ninety eight cents. And the abatement only applies to the number of months that the school owned the property, so it's been prorated. The second one is record number two six five seven. It's located in Lake Township. Property the school district bought, the abatement amount, amount is ninety eight dollars and thirty two cents. And then two properties that the city of Watertown purchased, record number nine three six five. The abatement is thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy seven dollars and seventy six cents. And record number one four seven eight eight, the amount to be abated or the amount that qualifies to be abated is three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Comments, questions?
I know that's, that thirteen nine thirty seven, that's, that's a pretty good sized parcel. I don't know if we've ever had one that large before.
Original taxes on that building were six, over sixteen thousand. The total tax value was over a million dollars, um, and the amount to be abated was eight hundred and sixty two thousand.
Uh-huh.
Let me see where this is at.
Yeah, it just seems like.
Is it the bank?
That's what I'm wondering, if it's the bank building.
Is that the one on nineteen? Which one? Oh, okay.
Hang on, let me double check.
Possible, possible city.
It's the old Wells Fargo.
Twenty North Maple.
Yeah, Wells Fargo.
Yeah, twenty North Maple.
That's kinda been a pain on everybody's side, hasn't it?
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Uh, both those abatements pertain to twenty North Maple. Both of these for the city, so it's just two different legal descriptions, so.
One might have been the parking lot too.
Okay.
Second east. So you could do them to get everything together.
Everything together, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Item number seventeen, discussion, possible action regarding court appointed attorney claims and allowable expenses billed to.
Okay, it was brought to our attention or, uh, accounts receivable. Council table noticed that we had an attorney who was a court appointed attorney firm in Watertown. Who were, um, adding. Secretarial or clerical fees to their court appointed attorney fees. And according to information on the UGA, UJS website. Costs ascribe, costs ascribed to over hits such as word processing, messenger's, secretarial services and similar expenditures shall not be allowed. In the billing of court appointed attorney fees. So my request to the board is to, I want your assistance to. Talk to the judges here or send a letter to the attorney firms, um, noting that these costs are not allowed. Looks like there's been seven hundred and fifty five dollars in costs in just twenty twenty two. That have been listed as clerical or secretarial fees, so, um. I know there has been some discussion, but nothing has gotten back to me yet, so.
What was that number?
Seven hundred and fifty five dollars so far this year.
Seven fifty five.
Yep.
Um, so. The, so that's so far just for all court appointed or that's for the secretarial stuff?
For the secretarial stuff.
Secretarial fees in the, in the, we've paid over nine thousand dollars.
Right, right.
Seven hundred and fifty five dollars. A judge to be secretarial.
And so the possible action that we're referring to on the agenda is to, to write a letter?
To write a letter, yeah, yeah.
So maybe that would, maybe we could work with, maybe the state's attorney or somebody.
I don't believe the state's attorney can get involved.
Can't get involved.
Okay, so then we just have to figure out. Alright, alright.
But I believe we have someone here who, I, I understand I'm not on the agenda.
Please come forward.
I was gonna say, just state your name also, if you could, please.
Use this microphone.
Oh, whichever one, that one.
No, they're both on. They're both on.
Um.
Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Amanda Thol. I'm an attorney here in Watertown. Some of my court-appointed billings are at issue here, and I felt that it was prudent to come to the commission today and explain what I perceive the issue to be. To be completely candid with the commission, I have talked to both Judge Spears and Judge Means about the bills that I have submitted to the court for their approval. We have also had discussions about the statute that was referenced, and we also discussed the court-appointed attorney guidebook. Well, the statute does not allow for secretarial services to be billed. It does allow for legal services to be billed, and that can be almost splitting hairs. But when I talk about legal services, I think about my paralegal and what she is doing for me. And under the statute, and specifically in the guidelines of the court-appointed handbook, it does reference paralegal time, and that paralegal time can be billed at a lesser rate, which is what my office was doing. We are utilizing our paralegals to draft motions or to prepare motions to parale, to prepare letters to clients that I would have been doing. She was doing it for me. I, of course, then review it before anything goes out and it gets signed by me. But she was, she was doing it just as a matter of course, as a matter of our law practice. I wanted to be transparent. I wanted to be candid that this is what was going on in our office. I included it on the bill that it was my paralegal per time at half the rate of what it would cost me. Again, these are all things that are going to get done, whether it's done by me or done by my my paralegal. So I was, in my thought, was saving the county money. So that eight hundred dollars roughly that was quoted is exclusively things, are exclusively things that she did, but had I done it, we'd be looking at at an additional eight hundred dollars. When I submitted my bills the way I did, I wanted to be candid. I didn't want it to seem that I was trying to sneak one by on the county. That's why they're billed that way. Again, I did have discussions with Judge Spears and Judge Means. They approved these bills. They noted that those time charges were on there, and they still sent them up to the auditor's office to be billed, because it is their understanding in their review of the statute the same way as mine, that paralegal services can be billed for. It just cannot be at that hundred and one hourly rate that court-appointed attorneys bill.
What, two questions, Mitch. So so the hundred and one is the current state rate for court-appointed attorneys?
Yes.
Okay. And then what's what's the statute number?
Yeah, that's what I was curious about. Cindy, do you have that?
We can dig it up, but.
It was under the UJS guidelines.
Yeah, it's under, I don't know that it's a statute. This came down from the judicial system, the circuit. This was on the circuits. And that's what I, that's where I started, was the court-appointed attorney handbook that I received when I got on the court-appointed list. And it does, there is, there there's a section, there are paragraphs that give exemptions for paralegals and paralegal time being billed.
I'll update on that, boss.
I guess my question is, how do we know that this employee is a paralegal? That's, that's the other thing. Is that her official title office? That is, that is what I refer to her, yes. And she has gone through, she has been working underneath for two years, which under South Dakota law enables her to be billed. She is not a trained paralegal, does not have that degree. But pursuant to statute, I can bill for her time because she has worked under my capacity for two years, under my capacity interaction for the last two years. So to me, there's still a problem there on whether her legal classification with your firm is secretarial or paralegal. That that's something that somebody is gonna have to certify with us.
Sounds like we need to look at these, look at all these things that the UJS guidelines and the handbook and find the statute that applies and then try to figure it out, and then, I don't know who we talked to. I mean, if we're not gonna involve the state's attorney, then.
I would say maybe both of the judges are working the.
I'm sorry. Other presiding, the 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 circuit presiding judges?
I'm not sure.
Or the court administrator, yeah.
We'll just do some.
Court administrator, yeah.
Yeah, we'll figure that all out as we go and probably just have those conversations.
The judges are more than willing to talk to you. Like I said, I talked to both of them. I was just upstairs talking to Judge Spears. It was his understanding that this matter was handled. It was his understanding that this would not be in front of the commissioners today. There was no communication from the courts to me. I'm the one who sets the agenda. No one contacted me. All I can tell you is what my discussion with him was, what his discussion with anybody else, I'm not privy to. Unless he approached any of you.
No.
And like I said, in my billing, I was trying to be transparent with the county and save the county money. If the county understands something differently or wants me to do something differently, I will certainly adhere to that. But from where I stand, as it sits today, I have talked to both judges, and both judges agree this saves the county money, and it is something that is allowed under the guidebook and under statute.
I understand, I understand your rationale, so.
We'll just.
Okay.
We won't, we won't take any action today. I think it's something we need to further look into just for clarification and.
And if you'd like me to come back at any time to address any other matters that's related to this, I'm more than happy to.
Okay. Thanks, Amanda.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Right, item number eighteen, action to approve claims for payment.
Not today, nothing for eighteen, nineteen, eighteen to twenty, eighteen to twenty-one, actually, nothing.
All right, public notices. I'm sure it was done, read board meeting February twenty-third. Do we have any other items?
Watertown day of the legislature tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Any other items? I don't have anything else either that there could be a quorum of commissioners other than the Watertown Day of Legislature. All right. So let's move on then to old business. Is there any old business? Okay, not hearing any. How about new business? Action for the open. I have one item. I did attend the nine-one-one advisory board meeting, I guess it's what you would call it. There is a handout. If any of you are interested in that information, Troy could probably forward that an email to you so that you can see as well all their budget items and calls for service and those sorts of items. So if anyone would like that, you get ahold of Troy and he will gladly email that to you. It's a good meeting, it's a good good chance for counties to get together and talk about different issues and how they address them and how to address them. And had a good working group that day, I felt it was.
Yeah, I I did too. We had a good turnout and state of nine-one-one is good, so.
And there's always those issues with radio and traffic and.
Yeah.
And communicating.
Still having a problem up in the south shore area, but the state's working on that, I know, so get it resolved.
All right, do we have any reason to go into executive session? Okay, under personnel, so I would look for motion then to go into executive discussion under personnel, motion by Van Dusen.
A second.
Second by Gable. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Unlike the.
Todd, oh, yes, okay, now I know. All of a sudden, light bulb came out. There will be nothing after, no. For future, just.